Meeting of the West Richardson City Council to order at six P M. And before we get started, I again would like to ask Stephanie to read our virtual meeting ground rules and then call the roll.
Please make sure the name shown on your video view is the name you would like the facilitator to use. You can change this by right clicking on the three dots in the upper corner of your video view and clicking rename. If you have an unstable internet connection, please also connect through the phone. That will allow you to continue to participate even if you lose internet connection. If you call in after you've joined on video, click the arrow between mute and video and there is a button for switch to phone audio. Clicking this button provides a participant I D. Please call in with that I D as then your phone is associated with your video. We will mute everyone until a public hearing and when the mayor calls the public hearing to order, if you raise your virtual hand, he will call on you and you will be unmuted. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you're participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Written comments on official public hearings will be read during the meeting. Brent Gary.
Here.
Uh Frederick.
Here.
Gail Brown.
She waved.
Yeah, Rich Beal.
Here.
David Fado.
Here.
Kate Moran.
Present.
John Smart. And I will note when council member Bloom uh signs in.
Okay. Very good. And with that, I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening after you all become muted. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, counsel. All right, the agenda is before you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda this evening, please?
I move to approve the agenda as presented, Mr. Mayor.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Thank you, counsel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you, counsel. Uh we do not have any presentation this evening and we have the consent agenda, which is approving the minutes of the regular meeting of January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And a motion to approve Ken Harper's contract for legal services. If there's anyone from the audience who would like to speak to these two items on the consent agenda this evening, please raise your virtual hand. Or if you're by phone star nine, you'd be recognized.
I'm trying.
I see no one. Do you see anyone, Stephanie?
I do not.
Okay. So with that, counsel, uh may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, please. Motion carried. Thank you, counsel. Are you stable there, Mr. Beal?
Trying to figure out how to turn this down a little bit. My wife headphones.
Well, I'll talk quieter. Okay, counsel, the uh moving on to uh item seven A and B as well as seven C is a public hearing and a resolution and ordinance vacating an access and utility easement for the Knights and Larson property. Alicia is here this evening to present her staff report. Alicia?
Thank you. Um the Knights together with the Larsons um applied for both utility and access easement vacations. Uh the properties are thirty ninety-three and thirty ninety-seven Tennessee Walker Avenue. You can see a vicinity map in your agenda packet as attachment four. Um they're looking to vacate the northern twenty-three feet, south ten feet of lot three and the northern twenty-three feet and south ten feet of lot or uh lot three and lot four. So they end up being the same. Um they also requested a twenty-three foot portion of the east property line of lot three. Uh Public Works denied that uh vacation as it was part of the section eight roadway plan. Uh vacating these utility and access easements would not negatively impact the health, safety, welfare or public good. And the retention of the easements no longer serves any useful public purpose. Um so we recommend passing resolution oh four twenty-one vacating thirty-three foot wide utility easement as indicated and recommend passing ordinance oh seven twenty-one vacating the thirty-three foot wide access easement as indicated.
Okay, thank you, Alicia. And without, I will go ahead and open the public hearing at six oh eight. If you would like to provide comment on this item this evening, please raise your hand or if you're by way of phone star nine and uh Stephanie will recognize you and unmute you. I see no one. Stephanie, do you see anyone?
I do not.
Okay. With that, then we will go ahead and close that public hearing at six oh nine. And uh resolution oh four dash twenty-one uh utility easement vacation. Do I have a motion, please?
I move to, sorry, I lost the page. I move to pass resolution zero four dash two one authorizing the vacation of a portion of the thirty-three foot in width utility easement for file E V twenty twenty dash seventeen. And I've, oh, do we have to do those separate?
We'll go secretly, yes. Do I need a second for this, this one, please?
Okay.
Motion and a second. Uh any questions of Alicia or staff in regards to this item on the agenda this evening?
So I have a question. Um I guess I could have looked this up, but are the, are the properties to the um northwest of this parcel, are they in the city limits as well? I take it? I think so, right? There's no, there's no island there for, for counting anywhere around these parameters. Is that correct?
That's correct, Sean.
And so uh the only, the only um easement that I questioned on this was that northern boundary only because there's a road uh it's called Paso Vino Street. Um you know, heading from the west going east. And so this, this, if I'm not mistaken, would prohibit that road from getting, going through to Tennessee Walker. Is that right?
Eric or Alicia?
That's correct. The according to the roadway plan that was approved by council for section eight, that's not necessary.
Okay. Just, I, I mean, as long as it looks like we have, um I just want to confirm that the roadway plan, you know, is right. I know that mistakes are possible. That was the only access that I saw that might be needed if, if we didn't have a another way around that. But otherwise, it looks good to me. I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Anyone else, counsel? See no one then. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose like sign, please. Motion carried. Thank you. And moving on, ordinance oh seven dash twenty-one, access easement vacation. Do I have a motion, please?
I move to pass ordinance zero seven dash two one authorizing the vacation of a portion of the thirty-three foot in width access easement for file E V twenty twenty dash one seven.
Have a motion and a second. Any conversations, questions, again, uh Alicia or Eric on this item? Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak to this item? If so, raise your hand or star and I. I see no one again. Stephanie, how about yourself?
I do not.
So with that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, please. Motion carried. Thank you, counsel. Mr. Bloom, I see you've joined us. My apologies, sir. I just saw your text that you sent me earlier today as I was trying to find out if you had a delay of coming into uh our meeting, but welcome, sir.
I like your backdrop.
Yeah.
I bought the mittens. Um so with that, we're gonna go ahead and move on to items uh seven E and F. They are a public hearing and a resolution amending the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-six six-year transportation improvement program. So with that, I'll ask.
I think we did D.
We missed, we skipped D.
Did we skip D? My apologies. I was so excited to see Mr. Bloom here. We uh got one, one ahead of ourselves. So with that, we, we have a first discussion and a motion to execute a cell tower lease, a vertical bridge is discussion only this evening. So with that, seventy, a discussion with, will be with Roscoe, have that, open that discussion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh counsel, what you have before you is a brand new lease. Uh currently, there is a cell tower on a little over a two hundred and twenty-five square foot uh piece of property. But there, the tenant that's on it is on a separate site lease with the city. Uh this lease, original lease was executed back in February of two thousand one uh with the city. So it's quite, it's at the end. It didn't have any additional terms or renewal. It simply expires on uh February of two thousand twenty-one, so later this month. Uh I've been dealing with uh, well, the cell tower leases have been bought out several times or assigned a different thing, different companies. This one in particular, I've dealt with for the last six years. Uh the rent is extremely low compared to market value, but that's what councils signed up for back in two thousand one. Uh we, we uh, we set up our current uh agreements a lot different to make sure they stay more current with their market value and they have a number of other things. So uh so what this is, is a brand new uh lease for the existing cell tower. Um I'm not gonna go through the lease, lease is included, but I will summarize it. Uh vertical bridge did pay us five thousand dollars for our efforts to redo a new lease. Basically covers staff time and city attorney time to draft this and put this together. Um if you look at the lease size, it increased from two hundred and twenty-five square feet to three hundred and eighty-nine. And that's simply because I've got a reservoir on the north side. I've got a cell tower leased to the east and one to the west. And there was a little bit of dead space out front that I couldn't lease to anybody else. So I made them lease the entire space that's there. And that was used as part of the fair market appraisal determined for American value. So I wasn't gonna leave a remnant up there. Uh the site lease initial term is for ten years with four, five-year extensions. That's important. It gives us another chance to make sure that the rent is at fair market value. So you don't have what we currently have with this twenty-year lease. Um and so you'll see the rent goes from six hundred and eight dollars up to twenty-one hundred dollars. Uh that brings it up to current fair market value. Uh just like our other cell tower or site leases, the rent escalates four percent annually. So January first of two thousand twenty-two, uh that fee will go up four percent. And then here's some of the other stuff that we've had on recent cell sites and it dealt with uh putting up a six-foot block wall to, for site obscuring on the front. Currently, it's got some ugly chain link, but not even slats. So as part of this, it requires them to uh do some site improvements as part of this lease. Um and then also make some modify any lighting that they may have that's uh not uh shielded, directed down, uh set on a motion detector or above a certain height. So it makes them do some changes out there. Uh with that, uh it also makes them do some restoration to the gravel portion of Astoria if they do any modifications or anything. This is something that we've started putting into each of the leases that makes it clear that what our expectations are for them to maintain that road anytime they do any upgrades or modifications. Um and then this was an odd one. I've never had a cell tower asked to be able to get out of the lease early. Um in this case, this is a, a third-party company that, that has a site lease. And they're concerned that with the merger of Sprint and T-Mobile uh that their current tenant that's on the tower now may uh go away. Uh basically, with, with that merger, they probably won't need to, to uh things up there on flat top. So anyway, that's what's before you. There's enough here uh that uh talking with the mayor, we thought it'd be best to bring it to council as a first reading to allow questions and get those answered. Or if I needed to do additional or more research for something and bring it back at the next council meeting. So with that, I'll, I'll kind of stop there and open it up for any questions.
Gail's got her hand up, so I'll recognize Gail.
On the one section where it, the, the lease term is ten years and then with an option for four, five-year extensions. Do we really need to put that in there? It just seems like we're just locked into that forever. And, and I get that they kind of want that, but it kind of makes us stay. And I, I mean, you said they could get out early, but that kind of leaves us, it sounds like it leaves us.
Yeah, typically these cell towers, Gail, they want uh to lease it as long as possible without having an opportunity to re-up or renegotiate. Similar to what we just saw with our two thousand one that this is replacing. So a ten-year term uh with five-year updates, everything, make sure that that price stays at fair market value. Rather than just signing a uh thirty-year lease with no option to go back and try to make changes. Uh the four percent annual uh keeps us close, but um
Okay, I, I mean, there's a lot of competition. So I, I just, you know, ten years. Okay, we'll, we'll look at it again. I just kind of sounds like it's long-term to me.
It, it is long-term, Gail.
That's the, that's the reason that we have the escalator in there four percent annually is to make sure that we are continuing to recover. Uh you know, the monetary of the uh cell towers as it appreciates and uh let's see what, I'm, I'm missing the word that I'm looking for. Uh what's the market uh?
Yeah, we're making sure we're staying current with fair market value. Where you can see the previous lease uh escalated and, and it's only six hundred and eight when we're getting over two thousand from the other leases. There's actually the one on the south, it's got a, a second co-locator on it. We, we get three thousand dollars a month. So um it, it's pretty valuable property up there. Uh my understanding is that flat top creates a shadow out towards the northwest. We're up toward the ranch. And so it's a highly desirable spot. So that's why you're seeing that kind of rent. That's not to say that that's typical anywhere else, but for that site, it's, it's highly desirable.
John?
Yeah, Mayor and uh Roscoe, uh my question, uh kind of uh segues with um with Gail's on this price increase. I would, i- is it, would it be safer to have our rent escalate um with some factor based on consumer price index or something like that? I yeah, I just worry that if we have a you know, twenty percent uh inflation or something outrageous, we're gonna be left in the dust on this uh rent on a monthly basis for ten whole years. Um so I'm concerned about that. Uh the other thing I'll bring up is that we've had comments in the past uh from the neighbors up there about how the access to this um along Astoria, they've uh used their big trucks and stuff to get up there and tore up the road. Messed up the gravel, et cetera, et cetera. We've heard, we've all heard this. I think it's probably true at times. What, what I wanted to ask is in, in this uh last, second to the last point, it says required to rehabilitate the gravel portion. Um if the tenant modifies, removes existing equipment or tower, what? I guess I'm not sure what all that includes. Like if a tenant modifies with the, with the addition of the six-foot block wall, I take it that would be a modification. So, so we've got a guaranteed, at least one guaranteed uh rehabilitation of the gravel road uh between Collins and the top of the hill. But after that, um when it says adds additional equipment, um I guess I just don't know, Roscoe, maybe you do. You know, how often the tenant engages in any of these things we've listed that would, that would trigger a, a road uh a road fix.
Well, I might be able to.
And my goal is to make sure that the tenant can't be accused of, of adversely using the road and tearing it up and so forth, you know, any more than the neighbors do.
Well, yeah, you know, I'm, I'm not sure how often they, they access it. We typically see it when they come in for a building permit to add additional equipment on it or uh for a fence permit that this would require. So that's where we're catching it, John. And I think I've had previous discussions of those property owners that I'd be open to a discussion about signing a maintenance agreement where each of the property owners would pay for that. Um but the property owners aren't, weren't interested in the past. They wanted the city to pay a hundred percent and I just told them that wasn't acceptable.
Right.
Uh the other offer was to look at forming an L I D to pave those roads, build them to city standard or some other standard. And again, enter into a uh where the city would pay its fair share towards those improvements and that, those haven't been uh haven't panned out, but at least we put something in here uh that when there's, these type of permits are issued, John, that we make sure, we're taking pictures before and after. Typically, when we know these building permits come in. Um as far as service vehicles going up, I, I'm not sure the size of them. Uh you know, I don't know if they're a pickup truck. I, I haven't caught them, you know, up there that often.
Yeah, I've seen it up there with uh, you know, the standard work truck with the box bed and so forth. But I, I've never seen them go up and down the roads. I don't really know if they're tearing them up or not. I mean, it's obviously some use. The other question I would ask is when it says rehabilitate the gravel portion. You know, it's pretty, it's pretty loose language. So I'm wondering if, if that needs to be tightened up a little bit. Um or if there is so any way to spec out a gravel road, I don't really know.
Yeah. John, I left it pretty general so that when it comes in, the city engineer can look at it. I know uh we just had some uh oh, I can't think of which one of the cell tower companies was doing some modifications up there. And we looked at it and decided there wasn't enough existing gravel there to simply just create it. We actually had them put two inches down. And so right now it's at this, it'll, it'd basically be up to the city engineer determination on, on that. I don't want to get specific because it may take more than that, but we do go out and take pictures and look at it. Anytime you have a gravel road on a steep slope with a ninety-degree turn, uh your, your uh roller will make ruts and, and washboards out of that. So um
John, I can maybe give you a little more of an insight in regards to uh how often sites uh have visit from the, from the, from the tenants. I have a commercial property that I have a cell tower on and they will, they will uh come out and, and pull maintenance, uh make tweaks, uh add small equipment, change out repeaters, things in that nature. And it's, and mostly it's, it's with a uh uh like you said, a one-ton uh box truck, you know, for, for service work and that nature. Uh when they'll exchange big equipment, they'll bring out a, a big uh scissor lift or a, a bone lift to do that. But like Roscoe said, any, any motion of those, those types of trucks up and down that particular road can disturb the gravel. And with the, the language open enough, it, it gives us the, the flexibility to say that they need to do something on the, on the site as far as to rehabilitate. Uh I guarantee you the people will be calling if they see anything that is, is a, uh is a concern to them. So
Yeah, I, I appreciate.
You just see people on those, on the sites uh just up and back. They may only be either five, ten minutes or twenty minutes at a time too. So.
Yeah, I, I very much appreciate that uh, that clause being put in there. Um I guess I just want to make sure to remind counsel of the concerns we've had from the neighbors on that road. Probably their own use and the use of the tenant. And so um a- as I, I don't know, I guess Roscoe, it sounds to me like you've, you've um thought about this and in a way that's satisfactory to allow us to ensure that, 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 that the tenant up there is not adversely affecting the road, it sounds like. I mean, because if they go up there and you know, repair, the only, I don't know what all the reasons are, a person that uh goes to one of these sites, but like the mayor said, it's probably to tweak something, repair something, modify it or install it. Um although the problem would be that they won't need a permit for all of those things. So I'm not sure how the city will know.
We know, John, it's, it's, yeah, it's a public deal. And like I said, if the concern is there, I've opened the door. They were, the city would be more than willing to sign an agreement to pay our fair share. But not just because we have cell towers up there. Do we foot the full bill, full cost of building a road and maintaining it? So um if, if the concern is there, encourage them, John, to reach out to me. The, that offer's still there.
Okay, so it would be an agreement because the city owns land. We're just leasing it. So it really would be.
We would benefit. So absolutely, we benefit. We own significant property at the top. So if all the property owners wanted to do a prorated deal to maintain it, uh we can look at that and put that together. Even if it's just they want gravel and not a paved road, there's, there's ways to put that together and uh for everybody that benefits up there.
Okay. Good. Those are my concerns. Um but otherwise, it looked pretty reasonable. I, what, what do you think about the, about the attachment to the C P I or some of it? Something else to keep us protected from inflation?
Well, the, right now it's four percent. I haven't seen a C P I over, I don't know, uh two last, it was like point something. So
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was the word I was looking for. Thanks, John, C P I.
It's a crazy world, though. So I, I just need to get caught for ten years, you know?
It, I don't know. It's worked on the recent ones we had, John. I, I don't know. I do know that they, they squawked uh and complained and tried to beat us down to one and a half or two percent. And we just said, tear down the cell tower. I mean, that, you know, you know, this, this is what the going rate is with the other four we have. It's worked well. If it's not, uh they didn't like it, they just take it down, I guess. You know, that was kind of the stance I took with them. Uh I think we do better with a four percent, I guess, is the short answer, John.
You know, language would be, uh maybe one way to patch this would be to have a clause that just says, you know, this is all you know, enforced unless the consumer price index increases by more than, you know, four percent or some outrageous number, which it never would, we presume.
Yeah.
Okay, well, those are my two cents. I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Air pro ten break.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um just one question for you, Mr. Slade. I know it's a relatively small lot and you have in there these six-foot tall masonry block wall, which is gonna be constructed. But I noticed uh we're giving them until December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three. So we're giving them practically three years to build this wall and do other site mitigation. Uh it just seems a little bit long to me for a, a small property such as this.
Good question, uh Councilman Brink. The uh, the request was to extend it out. Again, it has to do with a merger with Sprint and T-Mobile. Uh they may, if Sprint pulls off, I think the lease next to us is two years. So that date is, I think, six months after the other lease expires. That they may want to terminate this and exit the site. And so they didn't want to do any more improvements to it until they were sure they were gonna have a tenant. So that was a concession the city made on that.
Okay.
I think that's, I think that was just the block wall. The lighting.
Uh yeah, the lease said, does say the block wall and to mitigate visual impacts to surrounding properties.
Yeah, I, I think that one, but the light, the one for the light and stuff, they had ninety days. It was only the
Right, that's
wall that we delayed just to make sure that they're gonna have a tenant before they did additional improvements.
Okay, well, my point in bringing this up is then, once again, just to uh uh kind of follow uh council member Smart's concerns, you know, for the citizens that live in the area. Trying to just mitigate the uh presence of that cell phone tower as much as possible. I just think waiting three years to do the block wall construction and other mitigations is a little bit long. That's just my opinion. I'll still support it. Otherwise I think the lease is, uh, is very well written.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Blue.
Yeah, um, haven't been up there in probably almost forever. Uh, the, uh, there are two, two towers next to each other in front of the, on that side of the road. Uh, one had a generator. This one doesn't have a generator building. Is that correct?
Uh, no, it does not.
Uh, I thought it was, so it, it doesn't have a backup power system at all.
No, this one's unique. So on that north side of Astoria, there's actually three towers. There's four, four sites that we lease. The tenant that's on this tower is to, just to the west of it. And I didn't see a generator backup power with that, uh, sprint site.
I, I thought.
Which is, which the newer ones, the other ones do have that, though.
Yeah, well, I thought the, the one, I thought this one was semi abandoned or, or possibly was uh, connected to the other one. So I'm surprised that they're separate leases.
It, it's, it's, it's an odd one that comes back to, to 2001, uh, where the city would lease property for the tower and then lease other spaces for co-locators to loc on, locate on that tower. We kind of got away from that. And now we lease the space uh, to whoever's going to own the tower and then require them to have a certain number of co-locators to hopefully limit any future towers that need to go up there. I think the last one we did was a T-Mobile site that's just to the east of this one. Cloud and put the tower, but I think we required them to have room for three co-locators. And so it's one lease. And then we get additional rent for every co-locator that goes on that tower. So again, it's a change. This is an old, this is old language from 2001 that we no longer do.
Yeah, um, and, and we still have that communication tower on the other side of the tank, don't we?
Yeah, that's, that's on the T-Mobile site. Well, no, it's on the reservoir site. Yeah, it's got a repeater there. Yep. Yeah, you're correct. There's a tower there for emergency dispatch. And then we've got backup radios that, uh, city maintenance can use if self, if our cell phones go out.
Okay, so we still use that tower?
Yes, sir. Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. Gail, is your hand still up?
Um, does this money go into general fund?
Uh, no, these are, uh, property owned by the, uh, utility. So it goes into the 401 water and sewer. And factored into our rates. So the revenue that we do helps keep our water and sewer rates down. The, uh, the T-Mobile site that I mentioned to the east, that it was general fund property. And the revenue from that site does go into the general fund.
Um, I'm, we just needed some earmarked money for some preservation. I'm just wondering if this could be pulled out of it. Would it get eight to 10 and we're going to be getting more probably?
Yeah, no, this, this is, goes into the utility. It's owned by the utility.
But preservation is utility too, so.
Uh, preservation of streets. And a spinoff of the, so, uh, your utilities are enterprise funds and so, uh.
Okay, Aaron.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Roscoe. Appreciate your update there. And we'll see that coming for approval.
Oh, I see John's hand up. Is that?
Yeah, really, just really quick, Roscoe, um, three I, you're missing an L in the word gravel. So. But you highlight that there.
Great surface. Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you. We'll get that corrected. Thank you.
Greg, Richard?
Yeah, I got a, a follow-up question of what Roscoe just said. Um, this property up there, was this actually purchased or was this B L M land that we acquired?
I'd have to dig back, but my understanding it was purchased by the utilities when they, uh, put the reservoir up there on top of the hill.
Okay.
Good.
I just wondered whether it really comes back to being public funds.
That, uh, that coming to us the 16th then, Roscoe?
Yeah, this will be back on the 16th with the typo fixed. And if I don't hear any other comments, then I'll put it on the consent agenda for approval.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Then moving on to item seven E and F for public hearing and a resolution amending the 2021 26 six-year transportation improvement program. And Roscoe, you're still up with your staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. So annually, the city goes through their six-year transportation improvement plan. Uh, the 21 26 transportation improvement plan was adopted by council back in June of 2020, following a public hearing. Um, and then council can, uh, amend that program uh, following a public hearing. And so what we're going through tonight is a public hearing to amend our 21 26 six-year transportation improvement program, uh, specifically with the bombing range road, Keen Road intersection. Uh, you had a presentation at the last meeting from uh, J U B on our six-year tip when it was adopted last year. We had to put what the improvements were going to be. And 50 50 shot, we put down double lane roundabout, uh, but based on last, uh, meetings discussion. Uh, we talked about moving forward with a double, uh, excuse me, uh, traffic signal. And so before I can obligate the grant funding to move forward with design, I need to amend this plan and take it through the council of government and to Washington State D O T before we can obligate those funds to move forward with design. So, um, so basically the one change for our project, again, changing it from a double lane roundabout to a, uh, signalized intersection. I do believe we received some, uh, public comments, which is great. I think in 20 years of doing these, I've only had a handful of comments come in. So appreciate that. Stephanie, are you going to read those into the record?
What I'll do, Roscoe's, we'll go ahead and, and open the public hearing and listen to, see if we have comments in regards to our participants this evening. And if, uh, after that, I'll ask Stephanie to read those into the record. Okay. Thank you, Roscoe. So with that, we will go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:38. If you'd like to provide comment to this item on the agenda this evening, please raise your hand or if you're by way of phone, press star nine and Stephanie will recognize you and unmute you for your comments. I see no one. Stephanie, do you see anyone with the hand raised or a star nine?
I do not see anyone, uh, with their hand raised.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor, just, just to make sure that we don't have anybody, can Stephanie, can you unmute them real quick and just give people an opportunity if they're having issues?
So I'll ask everybody to, uh, hold any comment until Stephanie is successful in that effort.
Okay. I've asked everyone in the audience, I've, or I've asked to unmute them. Um, so if anyone would like to, um, speak to the public hearing, um, go ahead and say acknowledge that.
I don't need to make any comments. I did send an email in to Stephanie and I'll just let her read what I had written.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Uh, hello, this is Maricela. I just wanted to, um, check to see if my email comment had been reserved, uh, had been received.
It, it has, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. No other con, no other confirmation. So, uh, let's see. Uh, Stephanie, would you please read into the record the comments you received by way of email or mail, please?
Sure. So the first comment I received, um, the emails from either Carl Baker or Kim Lesher. Um, so it says, I have lived at 4501 West Latin since 1998, at which time West Latin intersected directly with bombing range via a stop sign controlled intersection. When the configuration was changed to the current design, the north part of my property was regraded to accommodate the current intersection between West Latin and Keen. In the inter, intervening years congestion has developed and it has become more difficult to negotiate the roundabout at Keen and bombing range. I do not favor a traffic light as the best means to address this congestion. I regularly negotiate this intersection in a very large five horse trailer pulled by a medium duty truck. The roundabout is easier and safer to negotiate than a light controlled intersection. If more capacity is needed, and I, I believe it is, perhaps some of the adjacent landowners could be approached for purchase of some or all of their properties in order to provide additional bypass lanes. Alternatively, perhaps we could act to reduce the number of cars traversing that intersection by enhancing bicycling and pedestrian access or by developing other routes so that this intersection becomes less of a choke point. I believe that these approaches offer more durable solutions that also contribute to quality of life and are less costly. Thank you. And the next comment I received from Lisa Nelson. My husband and four children live on Bird Hill just off of Blue Heron. We are all unequivocally against the installation of a signaled intersection at this spot. Our family travels this route conservatively five to six times a day. I have two teen drivers. Road safety in this community is of utmost importance to me. I watched the J U B presentation at the last council meeting. I had Stephanie send me the slides so that I could go over them and discuss them with family members and neighbors. We feel that J U B downplayed the increased traffic accident risks in studies that are highly accepted amongst their traffic engineer peers. Why was collision data from the Keen Dupertail intersection versus the Keen bombing range intersection not presented? Your constituents would like to see this considered before a signal intersection is even considered. Thank you, Lisa Nelson. Uh, the next, uh, comment is from Maricela Sanchez. Says, dear city council of West Richland, I am a physician at Cadillac Regional Medical Center and frequently care for victims of car, car crashes in our region. It has come to my attention that the city of West Richland is considering replacing the traffic circle at bombing range in Keen with a signalized intersection. I strongly recommend the city council to reconsider this proposal. Multiple traffic studies have demonstrated significant safety advantages of traffic circles. There is a 75% reduction in injuries and a 90% reduction in fatalities at roundabouts compared to signalized intersections. Please make a responsible evidence-based decision that helps keep people safe in our region. Sincerely, Maricela Sanchez, M.D. And the last comment is from Amanda Sperry. Uh, I'm writing in regards to the proposal to replace the bombing range roundabout with a traffic light. As a resident of West Richland, I am opposed to a traffic light. Roundabouts are much safer and cities all over the U.S. are shifting lights and four-way stops to roundabouts. We obviously got this right the first time, so let's not make the mistake of step, of stepping backwards in time. Um, I'm including an article for your perusal. There are hundreds of articles on Google with similar content to this one. And then she included a link to an article that was, uh, emailed out to council. Thank you, Amanda Sperry.
That was all the submitted ones. I see that we have another individual that would like to make comment and, uh, I will ask you to unmute, uh, Ms. Wireman, if you would please, Stephanie. And state your, your name and, uh, residency for the record, please?
My name's Ginger Wireman. I live in Richland, uh, 2435 Michael, and I travel um, out Keen pretty often to visit friends or, uh, go buy chickens. One of my chicken dealers is out off of, uh, Red Mountain. And, um, I am opposed to putting in a signal to intersection here. I live unfortunately near Steptoe and, um, can hear the difference in traffic at the Steptoe Engage intersection. The noise is ridiculous. Um, I hear people revving as they leave the intersection when the light changes. So you'd have stop and go traffic. And the residents who are so close to that, the noise is going to be unbearable. If you put in a crossing signal, I can sometimes actually hear the crossing beeper. Um, and I'm like pretty far away, but at night I can hear the, the beeper at Bella Reeve Engage when my windows are open sometimes. Um, and I'm, I think eight tenths of a mile. So for the people that live right up there with their houses backing up to that intersection, the noise would be really, um, obnoxious. And I think that, you know, other people, Maricela Sanchez, um, has given you some data. She actually said that she has more, I'm friends with her, and she told me that she has more car accident victims here in the tri-cities than she had in four years of her residency in Brooklyn, New York. And she has that many every year at Cadillac. And it is almost all, uh, car accident, or it's car accidents and that the, the, they are so much more dangerous when you get T-boned than if you get side swiped or fender benders. So, um, I think hopefully you will reconsider. Um, and then as far as the property on the southwest corner, I found it odd from a, a street design perspective. You know, I think you could easily shift it a little bit to the northeast without, without buying out that property. But I don't understand why anybody would want to live that close to an intersection signaled or traffic circle. And I bet you that the owner of that house thinks she'll never be able to sell her property. So maybe she would like an offer from the city. Um, and then even if the cost of that land is expensive, is it more expensive than having to maintain a traffic light over time? Because that's going to be more expensive over time than a traffic circle would be. So anyway, thank you for letting me hop into your meeting and provide some, some perspective. And, um, thanks, Richard. I like your background. Very cute.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Have a good evening.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to make comment in regards to this agenda item this evening? Stephanie, do you see anyone else?
I do not.
Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing at 6:48. And then, uh, resolution 0521 amending the 21 26 six-year transportation improvement program. To initiate the discussion, I'll need a motion from council.
I move to adopt resolution 0521, amending the city's 2021 2026 six-year transportation improvement program.
Back up.
I have a motion and a second, and I saw the first hand up on this item would be Gail, uh, questions, comments, Roscoe or discussion about?
I was wondering if Roscoe had that map that we were using last week, um, with the overhead how much property that we'd have to take from all those corners. What I was thinking about is that the Richland Y, I, I know they just seem to get bigger and bigger and after you do some offshoot, they're huge. They start becoming large masses of land. And I was, I couldn't remember what exactly, I know it pretty much took that house out, but it took from all of the corners, correct? Even with the, the initial construction. Maybe I'm wrong.
So Councilman Brown, you're talking about the Richland Y roundabout that went in?
Well, I'm talking about those maps you had last, we had last week.
Oh, I, I can give me a second. Let's see if I can pull them up. Stephanie, do you have them handy? If not?
I was just, I, I, but I remembered that we would have to take par, property from all of it. Not just one.
Yeah, there's actually five parcels that you'd be looking at, purchasing right away. The biggest impact was to the southwest corner. But let me see if I can, uh.
And then as far as we even had the discussion of realignment and the, the realignment, the movement would disalign the alignment that we have right now, which would take more properties as well. It just didn't line up.
I can just see getting bigger and then like they do at the Y, you, you'd end up later on because the South Richland out that way, you're going to just have a offshoot without the roundabout. I, I, it could just get real big.
Well, Stephanie beat me to it. Chris, thank you. So this is the roundabout, um, you know, that they proposed and had it set. Could it shift to the north? I think they were already real close to having issues with East Latin Road. Um, you know, I, I don't know how far we'd have to push it. It'd be quite a bit to push it over. It'd have to go east and, and north. Um.
Uh, that was the, that was the final, uh, kicker for me was the analysis that the, that the turning into East Latin Road would be untenable because the, uh, circle would traffic circle be far too close to it if we shifted to the northeast to avoid having to take the, the house property. So. Yeah, throwing that out there.
Has anybody asked the house person, owner, if they would be interested in selling it?
Uh, no. It's, it, this is a federal project, so just caution council. It's not simply buying it. You're paying. It's, this is a federal project, so just caution council. It's not simply buying it. You're paying relocation and a whole bunch of other deals. And I think the difference in right of way was nearly a million dollars. So those are preliminary stuff laid out. So it all costs, you know, buying additional right of way is one thing. When you take an entire take or home, that's a different thing that you try to avoid.
It might end up being condemnation anyway.
Well, you just don't want to.
Do it.
But let's keep this on the table. I'm, I'm, I'm open to it. So let's hear the rest of the comments and we can come back to this.
I lost, I lost my, 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 my screen as far as who I had, one, two, and three, so I'm just going to go from the top to the bottom. Thank you, Gail. We'll move to Mayor Pro Tem, Brink.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am very appreciative of the comments that the five individuals provided last week, or two weeks ago, excuse me, when we discussed this. I was in favor of a signaled intersection. And despite though the comments that were provided by our participants with regard to vehicle safety, I'm still in favor of a signaled intersection, and I say it for this reason. A signaled intersection will have less impact on our neighborhood in this particular situation. Again, as has been pointed out, we would have to acquire the property of one resident and encroach on the property of several other residents or businesses in the area. Number two, one of my concerns too is that a roundabout vehicles never come to a complete stop. And in this roundabout design, for anyone traveling along our beautiful walkways in front of Cadillac and then trying to cross over Bombing Range to continue on the walkway on Keene Road, I'm looking at this and they would have to cross about six lanes of traffic. And yeah, we might put a flashing light there. We might put a crosswalk. I'm sure we would. But asking our visually impaired or disabled residents to try to cross six lanes of traffic which is moving, including some straight through lanes, I think is just creating an even greater risk. Vehicle accident, collision, the seriousness of those may be reduced. But I am concerned about citizens using our walkways, trying to time gaps between traffic. And I still support the fact that a signaled intersection is the best. Because one other consideration, East Latin Road, I think we discussed, would be very difficult to turn right on East Latin Road for that traffic traveling eastbound on Keene Road, heading north on Bombing Range, and trying to right there. And there's about eighteen other streets that would be affected, including South Lake Court, South Lake Drive, Clear Lake Court, West Lake Court, West Lake Drive, East Latin Road, Alder Lake Court, Bonnie Lake Court. I could run down the list, but I won't bore everyone with that. Bottom line, I still favor a signaled intersection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Brink. Move to Councilmember Moran.
Yes, thank you. I, I also want to thank the folks that have participated and submitted public comment. It's really good to hear from the public about things that are going on at city council meetings. I am still, again, concerned about the safety, like I said at the last meeting. I was wondering if, when we were talking about East Latin and how that would be affected, what would happen if it were to be a right turn only into there? We do have right turns only at, for instance, at the entrance to the city. I just, is there something making it so that we have to do this right now rather than asking the person that owns the property at the southwest corner how they would feel? Because I, when Ms. Wireman discussed, you know, living next to a traffic signal, that definitely struck a chord with me because where I lived prior, I did have a traffic signal next to me and it was really loud. And I'm not sure if that same level of noise would happen if it were a traffic circle. I'm just, I, I really am concerned that we haven't quite done enough due diligence to look and see if a circle would work and what the different scenarios might be. I know that there was a lot of work put into it and I definitely appreciate that work. I just wonder. I, I still really think that a circle might be better. There's got to be a way to do it. We've got a lot of smart folks on staff and J U B are smart. I just, I feel like there's a way to do it. It's a problem that can be solved.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Councilmember Bloom.
Um, yes, I guess, I guess I'm a little concerned that we haven't thought about some of the other aspects of growth in the future. Right now, I think we're, the traffic study that was done underestimates the want to be able to get to Interstate eighty-four. And, and actually that aspect with the growth out in that area off of Richland coming back. I'm skeptical that we, we're, we're going to create something that in any case is going to be a tremendous bottleneck. Whether it's a double roundabout, whether it's a signaled intersection. I guess the, I, I would have to see a little bit more of the assumptions of why we have the traffic and what would be the impact if we, you know, people find an alternate path if they have a resistance. But I, I, I tend to agree with the discussion that the the property owner on the corner there, that the roundabout option would require taking part, part of their property. By putting in a signal intersection, we would be equally affecting the quality of that particular place. And I, I would think we would be a little subject to possibly causing some harm to them that would require compensation. So I, I'm, I'm still, I'm still thinking that some other approaches could be taken, including possibly partial realignment of East Latin and possibly providing an alternative path out off of Latin Road over to Kennedy. But I, I think we really should to study this a little bit more and, and see if there are any other options besides the, the gigantic roundabout or the, what I would say the detrimental intersection. That's all.
Thank you. And move to Councilmember Smart.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. I, I just wanted to remind everybody that there was also an analysis of the possibility of doing a metered roundabout, which is what I was sort of rooting for originally. But according to our experts, they indicated that it wouldn't have sufficient capacity given the future projections of traffic. Also, I'd like to remind everybody that we discussed the concept of using this street or the stoplight at this intersection to help meter traffic in town and coming from Richland in the future and trying to get some signals coordinated so that we don't end up with huge backups of traffic. So I, I think that, you know, one of the problems with the roundabout that we have today, I, I haven't heard a solution yet that's, even if you made it bigger, it's not necessarily going to, in my opinion, just from the experience of being there at rush hour. You know, what happens is a portion of the roundabout gets cut off basically by one direction of traffic. So it, it seems like in my, in my mind, you know, we either need a, a stoplight or a successful metering scheme to meter the roundabout each leg of it. That's, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not as familiar with how those work. I don't know, except for being in DC that I've ever been in a metered roundabout, but they have them back there. And I mean, they work, but they're, they look hugely complicated to me compared to a, a, a stoplight. But, so I mean, I guess I would be interested in hearing a reinforcement of, of the reasons about why a metered roundabout wouldn't work. And I guess I'm with, you know, Kate and, and Richard and others maybe that are thinking that maybe we ought to ask these people. But, but I have the house on the corner because the take that we would have, we would actually have to take a corner structure from the map I'm looking at here from last meeting's agenda, a packet. So I, I don't know what the sensitivities are there. We'd have to talk to Bronson and I'm, I'm sure Roscoe has experienced, you know, whether we even want to bring that up. I would also mention that, you know, there's innumerable intersections of major roads now in Richland, which have gone from being, you know, quote unquote, out in the country to being main intersections with stoplights with, with the ADA beepers and so forth. And, you know, if you, I, I think it's kind of luck of the draw. If you have a house that's on a major intersection, this is a potentiality that, that just is, I think, pretty well accepted in our, in our society. But that's, that's how, that's how it goes. So I, I'm not sure about, I, I wouldn't want to say that in any way the city would be in any way liable for putting a stoplight at a major intersection. It's, it's unfortunate for those that have to listen to it, but I don't see that there's any precedence for liability. So I just want to make sure that's stated in this meeting. Or Bronson can argue with it. But anyway, those are my comments. I, I guess I'm, Roscoe, maybe you could reinforce what we heard about the metered roundabout. Was that, it sounded like from the presentation that I, that they, that it would just wouldn't handle the volume or was there any other specifics on that?
If I recall correctly, you've got two lanes and you've got a shoe fly lane. And so it caused issues with how do you meter two lanes with one signal? Typically, the metering is, if you leave it, I think they'd said you could do a metering as you'd lose the shoe fly lane and you could meter the westbound, basically Richland traffic coming into West Richland, set a meter there, but you'd lose the shoe fly to basically, I guess you'd stop traffic back away east from the roundabout to create gaps for the southbound traffic during peak travel times. You can look at the roundabout down at Richland Y and I think it's split on how well that works. My biggest concern is this would back traffic across the entrance of, into the Catholic clinic there because you do set them further to the east. And if I recall correctly, I believe our consultant said that was a Band-Aid that basically bought you a few more years. But doesn't, doesn't, it kicks the can down the road, I think, is how I'd phrase it. You know, the alternate routes that have been discussed, look at topography. This is the alternate route. That's why the council bought the railroad corridor when it was abandoned in ninety-six. They knew this was going to be an east-west roadway arterial. And it, it was planned, you know, it was called the Horn Loop Road. And it was to take it around to Twin Bridges to alleviate traffic on two forty. That's been the plan since ninety-six. It's been in the six-year tip. Typically, it's, it's, you know, it's switched, but so you look at east-west, it's always been planned. North-south, you got the ridge line to the south, so there's not a lot of options to come over Badger or Candy. You're coming down Dallas Road and this is where it meets. And, you know, I don't know who said it, but somebody said, well, they'll find an alternate route. Yeah, they'll find an alternate route through your residential neighborhood, which is not what we do. We want them to use these arterial roadways. So it's, it's a balancing act. I mean, if, if you want to say safety is the top priority and at any cost, we don't want to have accidents, then you do over, you do the shoe fly over passes where no one has to stop. You do elevated things, not, not going to happen, you know, at this. You look at cost. I mean, cost is a factor when you look at it. You look at right-of-way take, you know, what is the impact to the residents there? And we always try to minimize our takes. Capacity is a huge one. We want to make sure that we're designing to meet the twenty-year capacity. I think there was a comment said we didn't do enough studying or modeling on the traffic. Actually, I disagree. We use the Ben Franklin Council government model. We use the traffic impact analysis that was done for Red Mountain Center. And we also incorporated information from Richland's Badger South. And I would not let them discount that traffic. I always made them use the high estimate. I wasn't going to let them to come into a solution that was guessing that these three independent studies were all overestimated. My guess is there's not room for an alternate route. And so as growth goes, this, this will, you know, these routes are going to see more traffic. We talked about the current planning changes north of Rupert on the Lewis and Clark Ranch that'll bring another thousand acres. That impact has not been studied and, you know, what portion of that's going to go Twin Bridges or come back around Keene Road to get to South Richland or out to eighty-two? You know, that, that, that's coming as part of the comp plan deal. So, you know, good discussion. I don't, don't discount. It's tough. But capacity plays a part. But I think really the big one was flexibility. With a double lane roundabout, you don't have flexibility. So if traffic patterns change, you're doing what DOT has done to the Richland Y numerous times. You're back reconstructing, making changes. And that's the biggest, that's, that's a big concern. That is a big concern. I saw these comments come late today, so I didn't get a chance to follow up with a consultant or try to pull safety data from that double lane roundabout to, to look into it. We, we did go through this and it's a balancing act that no one of these trumps the other one, you know. Great data. I appreciate the comments. Like I said, we usually don't get any comments on the six-year tip. I appreciate it. Because usually the, the, these, we get these comments is once the bulldozer show up and it's really too late. So this is the perfect time to have this discussion and make sure we're, we're doing it correct. I think one of the comments that came in talked about, hey, you got it right twenty years ago when you put the roundabout in. Don't mess it up now. Twenty years ago, think about the traffic pattern. Everybody came in Keene Road to this location and then went north up Bombing Range. Same thing, southbound Bombing Range is coming down and turning towards Richland. Not a lot of traffic went west. As development has occurred out to the west, there's now more through traffic than turning north or coming south, and that's what's causing the bottleneck. I don't remember who said it, but roundabouts work great when you, when they have balance from all four legs. And in this case, we've got a westbound that, that, and a southbound that takes a majority of the flow, and that's when roundabouts start having issues. You know, but I, I saw some safety things. Those are spot on. I think DOT has got a lot of information out there. No one's discounting it. A lot of that is though the statistics are comparing a signal to a single lane roundabout. You know, like we looked at this when we put that signal, or roundabout in twenty years ago. The pattern matched up for a roundabout to work well, and it's worked well. But patterns have increased and changed, and so now you have to reevaluate it. One of the things that they looked at is dealing with capacity is how much capacity you gain going from a single lane roundabout to a double lane roundabout. And it's very little. It's like thirty percent capacity and you have to make them larger with those, what I call shoe fly lanes. Whereas when you add a, a signal with two lanes, you actually double the capacity. So there's a little bit of, you know, I want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples that, you know, most of the crash data that we see out there is signal to a single lane roundabout, not a double lane roundabout to a signal. But take, take the comments, they are for the most part correct. You know, when you do look at accidents, they're less severe in a roundabout. Are there less? Are there more? I didn't get a chance to dig into the exact numbers, but they are. I didn't get a chance to dig into the exact numbers, but they are less severe just because of the way they're designed. That, that's, that's a proven fact and no one's trying to somehow discount it. Um, but again, you're looking, I want to make sure we don't discount pedestrian safety. So again, when you look at safety, they'll tell you a single lane roundabout is safer pedestrian crossings, that's, that's correct. But when you go to a double lane roundabout, that's a different story, you have multiple lanes to cross, and I think I saw somewhere, it may have been the same DOT. Uh, study that uh, basically talks about. Uh, people are two to three times less likely to yield to a pedestrian in a double lane roundabout crossing. So that is a concern, as I think Councilmember Brink brought it up, we've got a regional pathway system on the north side that is heavily used. Um, that that would be, need to be a consideration, not that you couldn't have a roundabout. Uh, you can put a flashing light, but even with a flashing light, that doesn't mean somebody's going to stop, especially with multiple lanes. We see that down on Van Geest in front of the old city hall, where one car stops, the lights flashing. And somebody walks out and that car in the other lane can't see that person in the, in the crosswalk, so we still have those issues. Um, I'll, I'll stop there, I, I see some hands up, so just trying to catch some of the comments and try to answer some of the questions as I heard them.
I just have two, two real quick things to say, and that is I also appreciate the audience feedback so much, that's awesome that people have made the effort to write letters. And express their opinion, I am a big one for um. Uh, uh, analysis of alternatives, and I feel that we've, we've gone through that pretty thoroughly. And then I also want to just reemphasize, uh, Mayor Putnam Brink's comments on, again, on the ADA and the, and the, and the. Crossing bicycles and pedestrians. Um, I think would be untenable with a, with a two-lane uh, roundabout, and I expect there to be a lot of traffic on those. Footpaths, so I think that's a, that's a huge consideration, so with that, I'll just say that I'm still in favor of the uh. Of the, of the, of the, of the stoplight. Um, given all these considerations, um, I understand all of the concerns, but I'm, the balance is tipping toward the uh, the stoplight for me, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Farrow.
Thank you, Mayor, I also want to thank the citizens, community members who have spoken out, uh, especially Dr. Sanchez. Um, I, I appreciate what she's seen um, in her time as a doctor. In this, and I would always go for the, the more, the safer route, in this specific case. The safer thing to do is put a signal in, in this specific intersection, regardless of the amount of land we have to take. Um, that house to the southwest, we'd have to, we'd have to buy that and relocate those people, but in this specific case, the signal is the best option. When you look at access to La- East Latin and all the streets that, that Fred has talked about that are off of East Latin. Um, and so I got into a car accident in the Richland Y on the double roundabout, because the. Person on the outside, or on the outside of the circle who is only supposed to continue and go up the hill, decided to come. All the way around to go down Columbia Trail, Columbia Drive, whatever that road is, and then. T-balling me in the thing while I was trying to continue going to the right around it, they decided they also wanted to come around instead of going up. Um, and, and drilled me in right in that middle, that intersection, that roundabout, so, but again, I appreciate everybody's comments. Um, I looked at the data before we talked about this two weeks ago and. Um, i- in this case, though, the signal, although more hazardous, for those people who cannot follow traffic law. Again, this, their accidents here because people don't follow the rules, such ways we see just down the street a little bit. People make a right turn into oncoming traffic and having those T-bones there. But in this specific instance, to try to move that circle around, to try to make it fit without kicking someone else out of their home. Um, or buying all the land and impacting countless number of citizens, uh, I'm still in favor of the signal. Um, and hope that when it goes in, if that happens, that people are a little more cautious when they approach this traffic light and. And again, obey traffic law, um, you know, coming to complete stops and not turning into oncoming traffic. Um, but I appreciate everybody's comments, uh, it's great to see people coming out and, and talking about this stuff, but. Again, in this specific case, I think the signal's our best option.
Thank you, Mr. Farrow, uh, Kate.
Yes, thank you, um, something that wasn't mentioned that I just thought of is that. Um, it seems counterintuitive, but I know that normally when you give. A wider place, when you allow more traffic to come through, more traffic is going to come through, even if. There aren't more people there, um, so it's just sort of this spiral of the more you allow for more traffic. The more traffic there's going to be, and then you have to allow for more traffic, which is how we get six-lane highways. So if we continue to do more widening and more allowing for more vehicles. My concern is that we're just going to have to keep going even further, what's the next step? I, thinking back to what uh, Councilmember Smart was talking about with the metered. Single, I honestly think that, you know, maybe we should look back to that. I really would like to, I don't recall what specifically the level of service was for that, um, and. I really sometimes wonder if level of service is the best way to view it, because it's always never going to be good enough. For people, uh, I say this as a person that gets frustrated driving my vehicle anywhere where there's another human being in front of me at all. So, I, I really hope that we can at least talk to the person that lives on that southwest corner. Because I really do think that's going to very much affect them, whichever way we do it, if we do the signal, I think that's definitely going to affect them. If we do the roundabout, of course, obviously, it's going to affect them, um, and if they have the. Do they want the opportunity to sell right now, would anybody want to buy the property, as is knowing there's a possibility of having a. Large four-way stop put in, or that. You know, I just, I'm concerned for that property owner, and I'm concerned that if we continue to widen. That we're going to continue to get more traffic there. I really wish we would look a little bit further into it, I don't think we've done enough looking into it yet, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Brown.
Um, I just actually wanted to back up what Roscoe said. That, that rode along there, the old railroad line there, it has been well over twenty-five years, and I know it gets us in a lot of trouble, and I do appreciate. All your comments, um, if we had more room, I don't know if the roundabout would be better or not, but I, I kind of lean for the, this, the light. Um, but that has been planned for a long time, and I know people come in and don't realize that, though, I know we've put in. Fencing and block fencing, it's cost a lot of money because people, you know, just haven't researched where they put their house or so, so forth, but um. I kind of disagree with Kate because, only because the main arteries of this, the roads, those are the ones that actually kind of get some preservation. If we throw them down into the neighborhoods, I think that you're going to have a lot bigger safety issues. Um, we kind of want them staying on main roads and away from our pedestrians. And that's, I'm, I'm with you, Roscoe.
Okay, thank you, and uh, Councilmember Blue, then we'll go to Councilmember Smart.
Yeah, I, I'd like to ask one question, um, right now we have one fly lane and a single roundabout. Was a, was an option of four fly lanes and the single roundabout considered?
Uh, no, that wouldn't have met the traffic pattern that we need, we don't have a lot of southbound coming Bonnerage that would do is a shoe fly going. Westbound on Keen, or, or northbound Bonnerage taking a uh, right turn. Uh, it's mainly uh, through westbound and north, but it's the southbound uh, left. That's causing it, it, it wouldn't, it would have, it wouldn't have, it would have been level service out, Richard.
Well, well.
You needed the extra, you needed the extra lanes, capacity, the double lefts. And the double rights coming in, that's your biggest move, and, and while I'm through, you'd have two lanes going, be able to go through westbound.
Well, my, my, my reason for saying that is if we, if we kept the single roundabout, we may have to shift. In order to not be taking out that property, we may have to shift it a little bit more to the. North east, but my, my thought is that. Um, your concern of traffic backing up in front of Cadillac, if we limited to the interior lane. It wouldn't uh, affect the backup into Cadillac. If the shoe fly stayed open going east. If we're going to double lane going west, the same thing comes in, because I, I s- I'm, I'm, I'm looking to the future, not necessarily our current. Well, let's, let's assume it keeps getting worse and worse for what we've got. The, I, I don't see a lot of, a lot of this traffic that we've been seeing peaking. Went away when Hanford shut down as much as it has. And a lot of it came because of the backup in the bypass. I guess I'm. I, I see, looking for the needs of our people, that. I, you know, your comment that a double, double roundabout only increases thirty percent. That, that brought back the, the question of, well, gee, what does this double? You know, when I, the, you didn't include that study, the, the chart in the packet last week. But, um, you know, we got to level D with the light and. And the delay time with the double roundabout and the delay time with the light were about the same, and so I'm, I'm a little. Yeah, I'm, I'm not promoting the double roundabout, and I'm not promoting the. The uh, the light, I, I believe we should relook at modification for a single roundabout. And live with the backed up traffic at level F if it gets that bad at certain times of the day. Um, I just remember parked on the bypass back in the.
Let, let me just stop, let me just stop you right there, one of the things that you're required. When you're planning under the Growth Management Act is concurrency, so uh, that means no more development. Uh, if you're going to go and say you're going to do the no- do nothing and not meet your level of service D. Any new development comes in, we'll not be able to get, we will not be able to approve.
Why, but your new development, I'm, I'm not saying.
I, I'm, I'm saying any development, period, you just shut down development, you, that is your job as a council. Is to plan for growth and have concurrency, and you know, Eric can jump in on this one, but uh, a single roundabout doesn't get us there. It doesn't get us there.
I don't see that this traffic issue is growth-related. Uh, matter of fact, I don't see that the traffic, this pollution that we're building is actually. Uh, accommodating our growth, because that, that's what I'm getting at, is the growth will be coming the other way on Keen. And their uh, intent is to. To get to the interstate or get to Richland. And we're preferencing, we're preferencing cut-through traffic, which is coming from Twin Bridges over to uh. Uh, towards Richland, correct, I mean, is that not the, the cause of this traffic?
Well, there's traffic, like I said, the three models, I'm not going to get into, I mean, they're, these guys, people know, traffic engineers know, know these models, and there's three different. Ones you had done by council government with a consultant, you had a different consultant with the TA that was done for the Red Mountain, and a different consultant. Uh, with Badger South that are telling you, your traffic is going because of growth, all those homes that are getting built out at Badger South. All those ones at Riada, now that Riada connects out to Dallas, and we've got a lot of homes and stuff getting built out to the west. You look at the way this, the arterials are planned, Keen Road's planned as a principal arterial, this is where the traffic's going, Bonnerage is a principal arterial. This is a major intersection that growth, as you grow, this intersection's going to increase. And is going to need, like I said, either a double lane roundabout or a signal, and. You know, again, we've talked about flexibility, capacity, right-of-way take, cost and safety, all those are factored in. At the end of the day, they will all work, and they all have different pros and cons, and that's why we kind of did the presentation. To the full council rather than just the utility committee, the decision you're making. Uh, I don't want to come back in five years and have to redo or look at again. Uh, we've got a, a, a grant to do the design and the right-of-way. Uh, and depending on which way we go, may or may not be sufficient. Uh, we haven't secured uh, construction funding, so that's, that's kind of a mute point, but you know, at some point, if the costs. Aren't reasonable, then that's, makes it difficult to get it funded through a TIB or a federal. Uh, grant, um, but, ca- council, please don't get me wrong, I. Uh, for Gail, Councilmember Brown, and even, uh, I don't know if Rich was on the council bule. When we discussed this intersection twenty years ago. We had the same conversations about whether it should be a signal at that time or a roundabout, I mean, so. It, it was agonized, matter of fact, I took it to council twice, because there was, you know, just. I, I guess there's not a right or a wrong with this, you know, and it, there's so many different ways to build a bridge, you know, it doesn't make it right or wrong. Um, and I can hear the comments, the concerns, um, you know. I think somebody asked, do I need a decision tonight, I would like a decision tonight, but I don't need a decision tonight, so. One of the things I've heard is uh, the right-of-way take and the impact to that house. Also the impact to East Latin, so. What I'd ask for, you know, people have kind of said their preference, but. Uh, I'd prefer that everybody feel comfortable with what we're going, and have a unanimous decision, I have a kind of a split. I think it leans towards signal, but that doesn't mean I just want to bull forward with a signal. I don't know what the right process is, Stephanie, but can we continue this to the February sixteenth? And again, some of these comments came late, we had problems with emails, so I didn't get a chance to go follow up with a consultant. But I'm asking, uh, let me go back and let me look at that roundabout configuration. And shift it to the north and see what we can do that we don't impact that house to the south, and see that we don't impact. Uh, East Latin access, and let me see what that is, and let me come back on the sixteenth before we. Uh, decide to amend this, we can just continue the public hearing, I'll go get that exhibit, um, and again, I, I want council to feel comfortable. Um, because what we put here, uh, I don't want to touch for twenty years, um, and I want people to. Understand they made the right choice, um, I'll look at the pedestrian crossing with that pathway. Uh, because I'm not just going to look at vehicle safety, it'll be pedestrian safety, so we'll look at how that crossing on multi-lanes on the north side and. In the crossing pattern there with East Latin, so let me look at that, let me talk to the consultant. Um, and I'll offer that up to, to uh, continue this to the sixteenth, if that's the right. Is that the right step, Stephanie or Mayor, I don't know what the correct term is.
Yes, as long as there's a specific time that it would be um. Postponed or continued to, I believe.
Yeah, let's put, I, I would offer continue to the February sixteenth, just to continue this discussion and have another public hearing and. I'll, I'll uh, ask the consultant to revise the. Uh, double lane roundabout to see how we can uh, deal with these impacts, do a little more analysis, the, the, the study, the traffic is planned there. I, I don't want to waste any more time, the traffic's coming, it's just what's the best way to deal with it, and uh, hopefully that will answer some of our residents' concerns. Uh, and a few of the council members concerned, it may not be perfect. Um, either, either one, but we'll at least have all the facts, and it can say that we really looked at all the options before we move forward. Uh, because either way, it's, it's a couple million dollar design and something that we're going to want to make sure is going to last twenty years plus. So, I don't want to have to redo it, so.
Can you also share the uh, traffic study that you're basing this on?
Uh, I'll have to figure out how to do that, uh, Richard, there, they are not big enough to email.
I mean, they're too big to email?
I don't, I don't think it's email, I'll have to figure out how to get them and Dropbox them or something, uh, but.
Okay.
I believe the traffic model stuff's on, well, it, it depends, I mean, the data, it's thousands of pages on things, so. Contact me to tomorrow, Richard, I can see what, what you're looking for and see if I can. it's thousands of pages on things. So contact me to tomorrow, Richard. I can see what, what you're looking for and see if I can get more of a compressed, uh, thing of the study rather than all the dependencies and technical data in the back.
Okay. Roscoe, if we're gonna, uh, if we're gonna continue this, uh, I want to continue it to the March second meeting. I will not be present at the February sixteenth meeting and I feel it's necessary that I'm here to facilitate this meeting and discussion.
Um, and we would need a motion to, to postpone as well.
Okay, I will, I will, uh, before we get to that, Stephanie, I'm gonna go ahead and hear out, uh, both Councilman Smart and Councilman Brink, and then, uh, I will go ahead and ask for a motion to continue. Uh, this item until, uh, March second. So Councilman Smart.
Uh, yeah, I just had a couple other new comments here. One would be, uh, there's this concern of the danger of an intersection with a traffic light. Might not be very popular, but we could reduce the speed of these approaching lanes. I've seen that done. Uh, you could also, uh, put in, uh, warning lights in advance of the, uh, intersection. I've seen, uh, yellow flashing lights, you know, usually you see them out on highways, warning people that there's an intersection coming up.
Those work very well. Those work very well.
Yeah, I, I, I think they do. And, um, also I would note that on the, uh, second image on last meeting's presentation. That shows the, the, the top down view of the, uh, of the, of the street light intersection or stoplight intersection. It looks to me like, um, the traffic would actually be moved further away from the house that's currently there. At least for the east west lane. Um, basically the corner of the sidewalk, you know, sort of extends all the way into where the roundabout is now. So. That helps put a few extra feet between what I would imagine would be the location of the stoplight and the noise maker. And, and the house itself. So those were just some comments. I've encouraged people to look at that image. Uh, I don't know if Stephanie has it, but just to show that it does sort of move the traffic up north and even further away from that home. Uh, maybe making it more valuable and not less. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Councilor, or Mayor Pro Tem Brink?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, if we do decide to postpone this discussion, uh, for another date in the future. While Mr. Slade, you look at, you know, what the considerations are for shifting the actual location of the intersection. I think one thing that would be important for a council to consider is getting some idea, if not quantitative, at least, you know, a ballpark figure of what the cost would be. The additional cost of moving the intersection. So if it's possible to incorporate some of that information, I think would help facilitate our decision making.
Uh, I, I totally agree, Mayor Pro Tem Brink, and we need to really take a good hard look at the monetary impact. Uh, because it could be substantial.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Gail, you got in just under the wire.
I was gonna make the motion to go, to go ahead and, um, table it till March second, you said? What's the date?
May I have a motion to continue this to March second? Two thousand twenty-one.
And I'll move that, um, move to do that. Um, and you're, you're just gonna bring him in back in for clarification, correct, Roscoe?
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring additional information, uh, back to council, uh, based on what I heard.
I, I would just warn that we, we do want to make some kind of decision and get it going. Transportation and budgets and so forth. We really want to get it on our plan. I, I know this one down on thirty-eighth has taken over twenty-seven years to get in. You never know.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Uh, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, let's go, let's go roll call. I'm sorry, I'm missing people here. So, uh, uh, everybody unmute, please. I'll go, uh, Councilmember Buell.
Aye.
Councilmember Smart.
I've seen all the evidence I need. I'm gonna say nay, although I do appreciate the, uh, council's willingness to discuss it. So I'm gonna say nay though.
Councilmember Moran.
Aye.
Councilmember Fettow.
Aye.
Councilmember Brink, Mayor Pro Tem, excuse me, sir.
Oh, that's okay. I say I am always willing to look at additional information.
Councilmember Blue.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, council. Appreciate that. So we will go ahead and move on. We have, uh, some unfinished business here that I wanted to share with council. If you see in your packet. Uh, you have a revised City of Westbridge on operational response to COVID nineteen. As, uh, as time has gone on, there's been a need to make some adjustments. Uh, you'll note that the, uh, repealed items are the, uh, emergency declaration of Benton County Health Office. They actually follow the state, uh, health, uh, declaration. So it was no longer necessary to have that there because they don't claim, they don't declare the emergency themselves that state declared, which is adopted by all health districts. And then also has, uh, was brought forth, Councilmember Brown talked of the mandatory vaccination or profile there. Uh, that's, uh, that is not, I would almost fall into the constitutional aspect of as mandating individuals to vaccinate against their will. Uh, so that's been removed. There's some other language change that you'll notice that, uh, that is in there. Uh, so the amendment, uh, uh, number one of January sixth of two thousand twenty-one is, is stands that you have before you. Uh, anybody have any questions in regards to that? Okay, seeing none there, we will go ahead and we have no new business this evening. Uh, this is the time for citizen public comment. If you would like to address, address city council. Uh, please raise your hand or if you're by way of phone star nine, uh, to address council. And then Stephanie will, uh, unmute you. I see no one, Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
Okay, uh, with that, I'll ask, uh, staff if you have any staff reports you'd like to bring forth to council. Uh, raise your hand and I see, uh, Chief Magetics first one up. Chief Magetic, sir, the table is yours? The floor or the screen?
Mr. Mayor, um, uh, real quickly, uh, just want to update council. I, uh, said last week I had my first round of the COVID vaccine and uh, last Wednesday I had my second shot. Um, I, I've had no side effects from either one of them. Um, the other employees in the police department that had received them, um, either, uh, minor about a weakness followed the following day. Or, uh, one said that night he woke up and, um, had fever chills for about three hours before he went back to sleep and he woke up the next morning perfectly fine. Um, so I thought I would report on that, uh, if anybody had any curiosity as far as, uh, what we've experienced on this end. And also, uh, I did send out a press release and I did notify council of our groundbreaking, uh, this Thursday at two P M. Um, it's gonna be virtual, uh, otherwise streamed live on Facebook Live. Uh, with limited attendance, uh, given the, uh, phase reopening, uh, that the state has mandated. Um, it was gonna be a very low key event, uh, for the groundbreaking. Uh, I, what we plan on is having an even larger ribbon cutting ceremony to make up for uh, for those that could not attend to make sure it is truly a community event. Uh, so we'll definitely make up for it in November, December, when we open up the police department for tours. And the ribbon cutting ceremony. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. Mr. Slade, this evening?
Uh, yeah, just council of a lot of legislative meetings, uh, the mayor and I, I don't know if I'm still your thunder mayor, but uh, we've been having a lot of meetings, uh, with the transportation packages that have come out. Uh, we've had, uh, meetings with Representative Banky, Senator King. This has to do with the SR two-two-four Red Mountain Transportation Improvement Project. Uh, you know, we've been supportive of those transportation projects that those, uh, our legislatures have stood up. Um, and basically supported, uh, preservation on the state's highway system first. And finishing what you've started, i.e. the twenty fifteen connecting Washington projects before we start adding new ones. Uh, so, uh, we're learning more and more about the, each of the transportation projects. Um, you know, some deal with no debt, uh, strictly pay as you go. Um, and other ones include some bonding, but again, our, our thing is payment preservation. Our system preservation on the state highway and then finish what you started before you do anything new. Uh, tomorrow we meet, uh, with Representative Phi. Uh, again, uh, on his transportation package and again, uh, well, uh, our goal is to make sure that our connecting Washington, uh, monies in the twenty-one to twenty-three biennium remain. Uh, and then also the remaining money in the twenty-five or twenty-three to twenty-five biennium stay. Uh, we do not want that to get kicked out. Uh, DOT updated the project estimate at the end of December. And, uh, confirmed the project total of twenty-six million. Uh, so, uh, between the, uh, make me do math this later night, uh, twenty, twenty-four and a half million dollars in connecting Washington with a little over nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand in federal dollars with the cities match of five hundred and forty-one thousand. That you guys did a budget amendment last year, uh, that, the transportation portion of that project is fully funded. Uh, so it's important that that money stay there and not get pushed out. Because any delay increases cost. And so that's, that's the biggest concern there. We also are meeting, uh, with Senator Hunterford and some of our other representatives on our well ten ASR project, uh, Ecology's capital request included a million dollars. So we can continue forward with that ASR project and so far that's still in the, uh, was in the governor's budget, uh, so we're still tracking that one and making sure we're getting support with that. Um, I am definitely getting my feet wet with a number of transportation, um, uh, committees and different things. I've, in the past, I've kind of lucked out and didn't have to, uh, you know, we've been very successful through our normal, uh, applying for grants and stuff. This is kind of a new arena uh, on the political thing. Um, and I just want to give a shout out to, uh, Benton REA. Uh, they have, uh, graciously allowed us the use of Pat Dunn, their lobbyist, to help us through this process. Um, I, I can't give enough to them, uh, opening doors to meet with different representatives, uh, to allow us to, uh, basically tell Westridge on the story and the importance of these projects. So this, we wouldn't be where we're at with either one of these projects without Benton RE's help and their, uh, their lobbyists, um, just doing excellent work. But uh, back to some, uh, I know Gail's been heavily involved with transportation. So we've been, I see her at these, uh, committee meetings and different things. I think tomorrow morning we're up early at seven for our Washington Highway Users, uh, Federation Weekly Briefing. Uh, Senator Hobbs will be giving, uh, a presentation on his transportation package. Uh, that'll be, uh, interesting because it, he allows for questions and answers to kind of do that. So there's a wide, uh, on that committee. And the other thing is, uh, assisting Gail on the, uh, Good Roads Association. So Gail's done the heavy lifting with that. Uh, with the reorg here in our public works department. It's freed up some of my time to get more involved. And one of those is, uh, to help Gail with Good Roads. So she's doing the heavy lifting and so they're going through a process uh, to set a priority list and so be helping her with the presentation to ensure our, uh, again, our SR two-two-four Red Mountain Transportation Improvement Project, uh, ends up on that Good Roads list. So that was it. Mayor, sorry for the long thing, but it's been.
No, that's, that's not a problem. And, and, uh, Roscoe, thank you for, for taking my direction and, and, uh, becoming more involved with transportation as the, the budget becomes more, uh, challenged in, in Olympia. Uh, and all of the different, uh, things that we need to keep an eye on and transportation is, is your, is your, is your, is your gig. And, uh, thank you for stepping up and, and, uh, taking on those extra responsibilities along with council members. But, uh, we all stand stronger together, uh, as both staff and council. So, uh, I, I relieve some of your pain with the reorg and getting people and staff, but now I'll load you back up again so you don't get soft on me. All right, anybody else? Staff wise? Okay, uh, with that, we'll, uh, we'll move on to council. Council, if you have any, uh, any comments, reports that you would like to, uh, bring forth, so go ahead and we'll look at hands that are raised. And I see, uh, Kate, you're the first one on the button.
Thank you. Um, I haven't had any meetings since the last meeting related to council. But there have been a few things going on at the state level that I think are really important. Thank you for getting back to me about the legislative priorities. I'm looking forward to seeing if there are specific bills to assist with. But there was one in particular that I would really like everybody to look at that actually got a hearing yesterday with the House Finance Committee at the state level. And that is H, uh, House Bill one-two-nine-seven. And that one's related to the Main Street Tax Credit Program. Because our state law stipulates that tax credits have to be used during the calendar year in which the contribution is approved. It means that the businesses that don't have tax liability from last year weren't able to fully use their tax credit. But this bill allows businesses to carry that earned tax credit for two more years. So they would have to use it by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. There are other bills that are going through that I think we could definitely put our voice behind that, uh, speci- especially the ones related to economic development. And I am hoping that others are looking at those. I'm sure that Mayor Pro Tim Brink has looked at those because this is one that, uh, Association of Washington Cities, which he's on the executive board for, has been pushing for that one as well. So I'm really looking forward to all the things the legislation is going to be talking about. And now that we have much easier times of doing remote testimony, uh, I'm hoping that more people will get involved in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And, uh, Kate, if you want to give me a shout on anything that you see on the Tri-City Legislative Council and or uh, items that you might want to testify on, it maybe points you in the right direction of, of getting that information. Uh, usually if, if it's a council member that's testifying, you'll have uh, staff and or the particular entity, uh, support you in, uh, in the, in the, uh, uh, information that you would share with the testimony. Uh, and then again, if there was anything that's unrelated to what our Legislative Council, uh, and our regional priorities. Uh, you may have interest in, you're certainly welcome to participate as, as a, uh, a citizen, uh, for any other testimonies. But, uh, it, we want to make sure that we, we stand strong in our region and, and support all of our regional priorities. So thank you for that, uh, email, Kate. Apologize for it, uh, being a day later before I got back to you.
No worries.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll go to, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Brink.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a couple updates, myself and the Honorable Phil Lemley. Councilmember from City of Richland, uh, will be participating in the, uh, Emergency Management Council Meeting. It takes place next Thursday. This is a virtual meeting, but it's our first meeting of the year. Uh, Phil and I serve as A W C's representatives to that meeting. And of course, at the same time, representing our local communities' needs. Um, and then finally, uh, kind of tying in with what Councilmember Moran mentioned. Uh, next week is the A W C's City Action Days, uh, February tenth and February eleventh. It's all online this year, but I understand it's still available for registration and the registration is free. So I just wanted to make that public service announcement. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Brink. Appreciate it. Uh, Councilmember Blue?
Uh, yes, um, I have a question, Chief Magetic. Um, was it the Pfizer, uh, on the Moderna vaccine that you got?
Pfizer.
It was a Pfizer. Okay. Well, uh, the good news is I'm scheduled for Friday to get mine. Uh, was able to get, get that done. So, um, we'll see how it goes over the weekend.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Brown?
Um, I'm gonna agree with Kate and Roscoe as far as I, I, it just baffles me. You could be there, you know, eighty hours, uh, a week with all the stuff they've got. I'm following housing and transport. with all the stuff they've got. I'm following housing and transportation. Um, there's, I I know I asked the chief a question the other day. I know they have a lot of law enforcement bills coming through, a lot of it it's baffling how much stuff they're they've got going and and with that taxes and stuff. So if you, everything's Zoom, so you know, get on there and see what's up. Um, and this is to our residents as well, and and try to kind of follow this. Um, I'm I'm kind of with Kate, too. We, you know, it's maybe next time if we think about it. I know we used to kind of do a legislative list as far as our cities so we could kind of follow those, and I don't know that we've done that or anybody's actually, you know, kind of keeping a list of anything that we're looking at, but I know we used to do that. Um, so maybe for next time. And I think that's it, transportation and housing.
Yep, and the uh Tri-City's Legislative Council i- is uh, we do participate in that document, and you'll see in that document uh some of our projects that are in there. Uh, and as I pointed out to Kate, we 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 are challenged with staff as well as don't have the deep pockets for lobbyists, but we have the blessing of Benton REA sharing with us, Pat Dunn, and uh uh, he has an associate that works with him as well, uh, that has has been very supportive of us. Uh, and then uh uh, so the the city's priorities that we shared with them was our ASR project, Well Ten, and our S R two-twenty-four improvement. Uh, and those were the two priorities that were at the top of our list for sure. Uh, we could, we can in upcoming legislative session, we can have workshops and discuss that, but I I must warn everybody that you know, we're as busy as we are, we're, we don't have the the support through lobbyists or or staff members dedicated just to that, so we pick out the certainly the most important ones that are directly reflecting the City of West Brits, and but also support our region as a whole. So that's uh, that's where we were at this year in regards to that. Chief Majetic, you got a hand up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, yes, Councilmember Brown did send me an email about one of the many uh quote-unquote police reform legislative uh proposals uh being debated in Olympia. Um, just to give you the scope, our WASPIC and the F O P and WAPA, which is the Washington State Prosecutor Association, cannot keep up with the sheer volume of uh the proposals that are coming forward. Uh, the majority of them are from uh unfortunately stacked against us, uh, but usually they've been uh even the the committee chairs uh will give more leeway to the uh special interest groups that are actually uh for police reform, and uh our local prosecutor, Andy Miller, complained on one that he uh testified today as far as uh awarding good time to uh violent offenders. He was testifying against it, and they shut him down uh when he was given examples saying they did not want uh personal stories, even though they they just had the people, again, in quotes, affected by police violence, an open floor to give all their personal stories and opinions. Um, and they saw that, you know, i- it's really stacked against um, you know, people that are arguing against a lot of these proposed legislations. I can guarantee you that this session, there's gonna be some ugly things coming out uh that will be passed uh for under the guise of police reform. That's going to be detrimental not only to law enforcement and public safety, uh, but the liabilities imposed on the locals jurisdictions. It's it's just mind-boggling. Um, so I I just wanted uh with uh Ms. Brown bringing that up, I was not going to discuss it at this time just because of the volume. Uh, but when we get closer to uh tracking these that are actually look like they're gonna move forward uh further, um, I'll start compiling a list of what to expect uh to come out, but it's not looking good at all.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. Gail, did you have your hand back up?
I did, and I I I want, I know that we're close staff. You probably underused your council, um, but like the chief said, there there we can't afford not to do some of these, and really, a lot of this is just us council uh sending out a letter and or, you know, a note, so um, and they've got some automatic stuff hooked up with this same stuff, so it's not a big job for us to do it if we know what we need to be going to and doing it. I know on the transportation, the housing, I'm set up, so they are automatically sending me that stuff. Um, but like the police um chief said, it, they've cut so much, so much, and I agree. I think there's gonna be some pretty unthought-of things, you know, people throwing things out there that are gonna be approved that really weren't thought through, and not just in the police department, in all of the departments.
Yeah, and A W C also sends out notices when it's time to act, or call your legislator, representative, senator, uh, or opportunities to go testify. So keep an eye out for A W C that when when things get hot, then uh they'll start throwing that stuff out there for us to respond to, so uh, I would appreciate if if you all keep an eye on that and uh uh respond as necessary. A W C's stellar on uh in regards to that, so a lot of good information there, so thank you, Gail. Uh, ready? Anyone else this evening? I'll give you a quick COVID update. Seems that what my most of my life is consumed of now. Uh, Gail, you asked me a question in regards, I believe it was last meeting, that uh, has the state released any any information in regards to the second shot? There's a second, the plan for that. Uh, the answer to that is they have not released any information to the local Ben Franklin Health District or any local jurisdictions as to how they're gonna roll that out. Uh, it's getting close. I got a uh email today from the local health district that uh we should have some of that information here shortly. Uh, there was also some misinformation given out earlier uh in regards to uh mixing the vaccine, whether it's uh Moderna or Pfizer. Uh, first of all, the information was, yeah, you can you can interchange, but no, that's not the case. Uh, if you have a Pfizer, you get a Pfizer second boost. If you have a Moderna, you get a second boost with Moderna. Uh, so there's, there's no mixing and matching. Uh, the Pfizer shot uh has a uh second dose no earlier than three weeks. Uh, if you go and and Councilmember Blue, when you get your paperwork from the from the line, it'll say uh three weeks, and when you get your card, it'll have four weeks, so don't be, don't be concerned of the misinformation or the confusing information. It's uh no sooner than three weeks and no later than eight weeks. Uh, when I was having conversations with uh the team in regards to how they're gonna roll it out, they don't know if it's gonna be single line uh mixed with uh first timers with second timers as far as those their shots, or if they're gonna separate and have a a a second uh injection line. So that's yet to be determined, but uh this site this site here is 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 stellar. Uh, the our local group that's running this show is is outshining all of the other mass vaccination sites throughout the state. Uh, just today, they administered nine hundred and seven vaccines. Uh, and they uh they they actually see more doses in each vial than what they uh are promoted as, so they're getting two to three more shots, injections out of out of one dose, and that's the reason that uh we saw the the call to the city last week that uh, hey, we've got, we've got it, it's unthought, it's ready to go. We don't, we're not gonna throw it away. Uh, the state's very opposed to them open the door in regards to non non appointment individuals, but it's better than going in the garbage, so we took that opportunity, and I had mine and didn't have any any side effects uh as well. Uh, just to give you an idea of what the uh differences were between the vaccinations, we had nine nine hundred nine hundred and seventy uh in our site, Clark County, Hope County, nine hundred and thirty-five, Douglas County, uh, nine hundred and twenty, and Spokane, four hundred and eighty-seven, so uh, just the one site here, we're 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 rocking it. Uh, they did receive thirty-nine hundred doses as expected uh this for this week, so they'll have plenty of uh plenty of doses to go through the entire week. Uh, they're set up to run approximately two, they can do two hundred cars in an hour at the site. Uh, well-oiled machine, you know, they're they're anticipating uh that they can at that max, they can put out fifteen to sixteen hundred vaccinations a day. So as long as the, as long as the product keeps coming, uh, they're gonna, they're gonna keep pumping it out. Uh, one of the concerns that we had was that the Yakima site that was not a state site that was set up by them, by Yakima themselves uh would take away from our vaccines. That's not actually the case. They are uh, they would compile their vaccines from uh health health providers that didn't have the ability to get the vaccine out and in arms. Uh, so they'll they'll take all of these vaccines from the different providers and and get them out a lot quicker. Uh, so that's their plan. Um, so things are moving along out there, and uh I I appreciate all the citizens who take their patience and times to 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 get it uh to get through the line, but uh, you can all be proud of of all of the the managers and mayors and county administrators and staff in our entire region working together to make this a successful site. Uh, the state was gonna come in and take it over right after we got it set up, but they have pushed it out because they came and visited and saw how successful we were. Uh, so we've got about three months to where they're gonna leave us alone, so uh, that's be the one way to mess up a good program is have the state take it over. So with that, I uh I don't think I have anything else to add on COVID. If you want any more information in regards to that, feel free to reach out to me. I'd be more than happy to share with you. Counsel, again, thank you for a good conversation this evening, Roscoe. Uh, I appreciate uh uh, your your passion to make sure that you you hear uh and get all the information from both citizens and 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 council members and and take another look at things. Uh, whichever way we look at it, it's not gonna be an easy decision, and I don't know that we're gonna get everybody on the same page, but uh, we'll give Roscoe another opportunity to take a swing at it and see if he can answer some more questions than everybody had, so with that, I thank everybody for the long evening, and uh we'll adjourn this meeting at eight oh four. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.